So we've got Marsh GPA, Stag funding for the design. It's part of the structure. So once that gets in, they'll do the design and then, and then the problem that happens honestly out of that is that it may end up being a sole, sole source deal where it makes sense that the designer, because it's pretty much a package plan. Yeah, but we can't do that particularly because of, I mean, we can't design build because it's really squirrely with one is we don't have the money to draw the bill harder than the other is because of the federal fund and everything. So we've got to go through a process and then land on the show.
So it sounds like you could probably have this to your right.
Well, yeah, yeah, we're looking at about a five to six months process. We're also working on a four, a real wire thing. This is around my decision. It's not where my staff would work by the state. So we're working on this. So it's a, it's a multiple things. So that's a process. We can't kick it in a period until we have the, so we're, you know, we're trying to parallel with someone, but there's, you know, the mitigating factor is about one or two million. Well, we're, we're also, we just went out with an RPA, water rate study, if you look at the capital. So there's some opportunity there over time to put some money out of that deal, which then the general fund could pass the, there to fund it in advance. And the payback of the water rates at the time. There's any other ways. There's grants. So we're, but we're really, because it, because construction is, construction is very, it's relatively short. It's, it's probably a three to four month construction because it's primarily a package deal. Yeah, well, it's just, it's.
Testing, testing one to three.
You know, if you're, you're soft water, you know, it's a, your water's softer in home or whatever, it's just a higher, higher level, but it's not, it's not all that nice. You know, it's kind of like packaged in the house. Yeah, I mean, it's a little bit, but it's kind of the same way where it's not a lot of, all the pieces are, they're actually a whole piece of, several pieces.
The next meeting, that's the next meeting, right?
US one. I always put US.
Do we even need to discuss it or do we just?
Yeah, be careful.
Exactly. It's only initial. Now there's Cal EPA as well.
That's right.
All three EPAs.
I'll defer to your presentation because other than knowing properly this and, um, it's very, very, that's about seven.
Yeah, I noticed there's a couple new council members that never heard before. So I was planning to do a little background upfront of short because I know I have only ten minutes, so I'm going to have to talk a little fast. But I can't, I'm timing it, I should get it done.
Today is January 21st. It's a Tuesday and it's 7:34 PM. Can we have roll call please? Yes. Councilmember Abrica.
Here.
Vice Mayor Gochet.
Here.
Mayor Martinez.
Here.
For the record, councilmember Rutherford and councilmember Moody will not be present this evening. You have a call.
Okay. Approval of the agenda.
Is this where I do?
Number two.
I make a motion that we approve the agenda.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second by our vice mayor and councilmember. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, motion passes. Public comment, do we have speakers? No?
No.
Okay. Moving on to consent calendar.
Is this where we pull the item?
I think we should, we can just wait till we get to that item maybe.
Okay.
Consent calendar.
I make a motion that we approve the consent calendar.
Okay, we have a motion by our vice mayor.
I'll second.
Okay, a second by councilmember Abrica. All those in favor of approving the consent calendar say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes with three yes votes. Special presentations this evening. It looks like we have two special presentations tonight. The first one being the community development department. So we'll go ahead and get started with that. It's in about 10 minutes.
Madam Mayor, is this, yeah, madam mayor and councilmembers, thank you. It is my pleasure this evening to introduce John Doughty, our community development director. As you know, we made a commitment to have each of our departments come and make a brief presentation on their department. And tonight it's my pleasure to introduce John Doughty, who will do theirs for the community development department.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, mayor. Councilmembers, it's a pleasure to be here. John Doughty, community development director. With me tonight, our management team, if they could stand up. Kamal, don't sit. I want to make sure you all recognize those folks. I know they're up here occasionally doing presentations. They are a critical piece to our success and thank you for being here. I can see everything, you can't. So this is your community development staff. Unfortunately, some of our staff are a little camera shy, so we have everybody, but trying to get everybody in the picture from day to day is a rather challenging experience in and of itself. But these are many of the, the men and women who serve this community, serve, and I think serve this community very well. I thought this was good from the perspective of, I, I think that when you come to our department, you'll find folks who are committed to service, committed to helping community and helping people. And while we all are not always the happiest of all folks, I think we do have very many happy staff and I think they are happy because they are serving and helping others. So what is the community development department? Well, the community development department is comprised of a number of functions. I won't read all of them, but you see many of those from, from day to day. The ones that most people know are really the permit services, code compliance side, building, planning permits, engineering permits, things of that nature. But we also have housing, capital improvements, maintenance and special projects. And we'll talk about each of those a little more in detail. So permit services include again maintaining the, the building inspection services, plan review, so any and all development activity, any and all expansions, remodels, anything that virtually that involves your construction of your home, a business, interior of a business require permits and those permits run through the planning department component, the building department function here as well as engineering. And ultimately at times end up before the planning commission, which is something that the department oversees as well as sometimes the public works and transportation commission. So these involve a number of issues and again, I won't go into the detail of those, but many of those you see as a council coming up as public hearings, many of these you don't see, but happen as administrative items for the department to complete.
We, we in the building division have just remodeled and renovated the permit center and.
You'll notice that it's very open environment. And it's soon to be a welcome environment for the public to come in as we provide and provide permit services for the citizens of East Palo Alto and those interested in building here. We welcome you and we invite you to come and participate or stop by and just see our new renovation. And we appreciate this opportunity to present it to you.
So this is Rick McManus. He is our recent addition as the new building official. And we are excited because one of the, one of the issues with hiring Rick was to restructure a little bit of how we're, how we handle the whole permit functions within the city and really combining all of those functions of building, engineering, planning, code enforcement, to the extent that we do those issues into a singular point of contact. And part of that is building a new infrastructure, which is the permit center, as well as sort of redefining functions and roles. And if you recall with the last budget, you approved a second permit tech mission position and that's part of the vision here. So we're working on the infrastructure and we're going to have a grand opening for that structure as well as, which is housed within 1960 Tate, as well as discussion about how we're proceeding on the permit services side. So planning, you, you again see many of these items, you've seen many of these items if you've sat on the planning commission and that's part of the current planning side of things, those are really applications that come forward, special use permits, variances, maps, things of that nature, the tentative maps that require approvals in some form or fashion, as well as environmental review. The other side of planning is the more the long range planning, the Ravenswood Four Corners specific plan is typical with that. There's work with regard to the general plan, the area plan on the west side, a number of areas where, where, where the long range planning also as well. Long range planning handles much of the ordinance revision work, particularly those issues related to zoning. And you saw that recently with the package of signed ordinance revisions. And then planning also takes on special projects. Obviously this is one that's, that's pretty recent and the council's been very engaged with, which is the second units and garage conversion analysis. Housing, if you recall about two and a half years ago, when the, when the community development department was, was created out of multiple divisions, took over housing services and this has been an area where we really need to put greater focus and effort on. Staff has done, I think, a very good job to this point of getting the BMR, the below market rate portfolio together, getting the files together, clearing out things that shouldn't be in those files and getting a full accounting of, of the portfolio that we have, both from a for sale and rental piece. We recently completed the housing element and that housing element is going to be again updated as a result of the new arena, regional housing needs assessment process, particularly that that's tied to issues of, of dealing with the climate change. And so that's going to be something that'll be moving forward as well as you recently gave direction on ordinance revisions for the inclusionary housing and this is part of the, the nexus study that came forward. So these are all efforts and, and things that are going forward on the housing side. And there's new projects work as well there. Capital improvement side, this is something that, that we've been hitting this council pretty regularly with. You approved the 10-year capital improvement plan and program last budget. We have been working very diligently on many of these projects and many of these projects are going to be multi-year projects. Cooley Landing Phase Two was just, just completed and it, it's about 90, 90 to 95% complete, which is the access, the utilities. And so it should be reopening to the public sometime in February. But there's other projects, the Bay Road project, again, huge project, eight and a half million of federal earmark dollars to maintain and retain on that project alone is a critical issue. And then the Glory Way well, we're well aware of the issues regarding water and water supply needs, University Avenue Bridge design and construction. Again, the $2 million federal earmark that we're trying to, to retain with that, plus maintain a $5 million local grant that was received from the transportation authority. Running me storm drain is something that we'll work forward in the, in September, August time. We cannot do work on that because of environmental constraints. And again, a whole host of other things that are working through on this. Flood control, a significant issue. Storm drain master plan. On the 18th, we will be back to, to the council to talk about the findings on the storm drain master plan. There are, as we expected, significant needs there and, and those will help again define projects and areas of need for the future capital improvement program that we bring forward with the budget as one area. Maintenance is, is a great group of, of folks who every day go out and work very hard for this community. Cleaning graffiti, picking up trash, keeping the parks clean, neat, orderly mode, keeping the, the University Avenue median and keeping the sound wall landscaping clean and neat. What I can tell you is that, is that they do an amazing job with a very limited staffing. And I would say that goes double for the entire department. But maintenance really fills, fills the struggle out there with a lot of issues and a lot of needs. This is just a pretty basic list of, of many of the things that, that they do and a lot of these things are not even really contemplated in the mix of things that, in thinking about what's going on. I don't, you know, most people don't think about what it takes to do the street holiday decorations and that's a pretty significant undertaking every year to put them up, wire them up, take them down and deal with it. But I think the, at least at this point, the council has, has made that a priority and it's important for this community. But those are, those are significant efforts that, that take away from other things that aren't getting done at the same time. So it's a, it's a tough balance out there sometimes with what we're dealing with. And these are just, you know, some, a sample of some of the things that we're working through out there on a day-to-day basis with our maintenance crew. Something that really is a significant issue these days, and I don't think I have to tell you that, but I might as well say it, is graffiti and graffiti abatement. So we've been working on a number of, of policy issues and programmatic kind of issues. We're coordinating, collaborating with the police department. But one of those issues has just come about with the, with the picture to your right, which is to provide paint and materi, and, and paint brushes to folks to allow them to go ahead and paint their fences and paint the walls that are around their home to get rid of abatement, abate graffiti out there. So this is something that, it's on a pilot program. We're working closely with Home Depot, trying to get their involvement. We have been successful to some extent with them. We think this can be a much bigger effort and a much bigger collaborative with Home Depot. But this is something we'll be talking a little more about as we move forward, but we are in the pilot phase of this effort.
I'm TA4, maintenance division manager. Maintenance division responsible for providing many services for the community. Issues facing maintenance division are illegal dumping and graffiti abatement. We have one person dedicated full-time to graffiti, public guardways, parks, bus shelters and escape party. We are working in developing programs and strategies to better handle these issues. Thank you.
Sorry. I was hoping that would work better. That was Jay Farr. Basically, if you didn't pick it up, Jay was talking about the tremendous effort and workload that comes from graffiti and the illegal dumping abatement issues. Now, we work very collaboratively with, with recology to deal with large dumping areas, but this is just a constant battle and something that, that, that we're, we're struggling with to try to figure out an answer to. Later on tonight, we'll talk a little bit more about this from the perspective of the mandates that the water board is, is giving us to keep this kind of material debris out of the San Francisco Creek in the bay and any and all waterways out there. And again, the graffiti itself is a challenge. We are literally at times devoting an entire, an employee a day out to graffiti abatement to cover many of the same areas that we're covering the day before to try to address this issue. And so we again are looking at some strategies, working with the police department. But this also takes the community stepping up and talking while it's occurring and, and trying to deal with this issue and catch it, both from the illegal dumping and the graffiti abatement. The storm drain maintenance is a huge issue and we recently had an intern come in under the management training exchange program and we'll talk about this more during the budget process, but at this point, we clearly have significant issues in this area. We have a vector truck that is, a truck that needs, we need to clean this, that is at its, it's got extended life at this point. It really needs to be replaced and that's a half a million dollar plus investment. Staffing, to staff that and run that and to do the things that were just mandated to do to clean the drains is a significant issue and effort. And we'll talk more about that later on, but this is a significant effort that is going to have to be picked up for compliance. And you know, just a, a little over a year ago, we had the flood and we found out where we were in, in the context of emergency preparedness. We handled that, I think, well. I think we would handle a similar occurrence far better. And a lot of things have been worked on over the years with a number of partners and through this collaborative, through the city manager's office, through the police department and work with the San Francisco Creek partners have been significantly beneficial in this area. Urban forestry is one of these programs that is not a really one that we talk about a lot. We have a significant number of public trees, trees are in the right of way. Those are our obligation to maintain at this point in, in our structure. This is a significant undertaking. We had a, with a grant, we're able to do an inventory and recently we, we removed 30 of the most problematic, dangerous trees from the right of way, but there are additional ones that we really need to deal with. And we've talked about this as well as the need to look at more preventive maintenance efforts with, with the city. The more money you put up front in preventive maintenance, Kamal will tell you, the less money you have to do to build and rebuild and reconstruct the, the improvements that are there because you've let them go. So this is an effort and this goes for whether it's underground, out of sight and out of mind or above ground in the context of sealing the asphalt and keeping water and other material from getting in the streets. The special programs are an area that, that are important to the community and important to this department. Senior services mainly senior nutrition as well as the senior shuttle. Mitch Dempsey and Maurice handle the, the shuttle for the seniors and Tammy Holloway handles the senior nutrition. And together, those functions provide 35 to, to 45 individuals on a daily basis, an opportunity to come to the senior center as well as to get a very nutritious meal for lunch as well. General plan update is a significant effort, a million dollar grant plus another almost half million dollars of general fund committed to this project over the next two and a half years. Significant work and effort. The free community shuttle, you heard a little more about this the last time you met as city council in February. We'll talk a little more about the shuttle, but still an effort. Economic development, this has been an area of focus for the, for the city. This is a significant issue in part, as we've talked about, is that without the infrastructure and water, we can have all the greatest plans in the world, but we cannot accommodate new development if we don't have available water, infrastructure and water availability to serve those. So critical issue is the capital project work, but that doesn't mean we stop working on these areas and working toward implementation of the four corners plan, for example. And then we'll talk a little bit about this in an item later, but the Clean City, Clean Bay program. And basically this is a significant mandate put forth by state and federal government to maintain clean waters. And I've already discussed this, but this is a significant issue, significant effort and foreseeably probably at least three times the amount of budget that we're currently allocating to this will be needed for capital and for staffing efforts to meet our mandates. And then an area that is not thought about too much, I think, is the regional participation. We support many of the groups that you sit on as board members and this is a very time consuming and a significant effort for, for staff to maintain those relationships, but it's also critical to maintain those relationships, build relationships and, and to be able to do that. So it's a balancing act between all the, all the demands that we have with very limited staffing. So I won't go into great detail, there's a lot of these. I'm very, what I will say is I'm extremely proud of what the department has been able to accomplish, what the staff has been able to maintain in terms of, of existing funding sources, maintain EPA monies that, that, for projects such as the Glory Way well, the Runnymede basin, to get another $670,000 toward the Runnymede basin enhancement, to put $300,000 package together for reimbursements for flood repair. These are all important and, and more, I think most notably is much of this work was done through this list with added effort of dealing with flood recovery, flood repairs and flood reimbursement requests, all that package going along with that, that was not anticipated and not planned. Now that means that some of the accomplishments are not where we would like them to be entirely because we had to put some things on hold. But the bottom line is, is that we've been able to do a lot of things for a lot of people to better the community. And, and I think that goes out to the staff and the managers of the department. So I, I'll, I'll end with, with this, which is the, looking out to the horizon and looking out to the issues and sort of the things that are going to be coming forward out to this council at times and also through the budget process is really this critical issue of, is maintaining focus on our core mission and core efforts and obligations. Clearly the job market is improving, which is a good thing for, for the region and the community, but that means hiring and retaining qualified staff just gets that much more difficult for us to do. And so we're going to have to work that much harder to, to do that. And we talked a little bit about the regional presence. Clearly the housing affordability issue is, is a significant issue that's not going away. And right now we are struggling and working through this issue with the city manager and, and others in the community with this, of how we operate Cooley Landing, how we fund it and what Cooley Landing ultimately looks like beyond just the park facility, but this, but particularly the building and the programming of that facility. And then, you know, this is just beating the same drum that we've been beating, I guess, but the water, water and water, the issues of water supply and water system. You know, we have a new, new challenges coming up. The SFPUC has a, an increase set for us on the wholesale side of around 31% anticipated for wholesale. percent anticipated for wholesale water cost to cover infrastructure cost, to seismic retrofits there and other related issues. And, as we all know, we have not seen much rain this, this year, or last for that matter, except for the December twenty-third, it seemingly like. And so, we are now looking at a, at a voluntary movement toward reductions and, and that may ultimately go toward a mandatory drought reductions, and that's something that we have not, as staff, had to deal with, so that's a challenge. We're out with the water rate study, that's gonna be a significant effort, and we are continuing to look for funding for constructing Glory Way Well. We're about one point two million short there and we really need to look, as a separate component, meter replacement program for all the water meters in our water system have not been replaced in many years as they really should have been. And that's just part of, of the story here. So, the good news is, we've maintained and continue to work through Bay Road, University Avenue Bridge, the Runnymede, continue to work with, on flood protection, both at the title and the creek level. And, and that's the efforts that we're dealing with. So, I think it's always good to end with, I love this quote, "Do not let what you cannot do get in the way of what you can do." So, huge effort that we have, we have a lot of things in front of us, a lot of issues as a department, as a city. And there are things that we are not gonna be able to do, but there are a lot of things that we can do and we have to figure out ways to make those things happen and continue to make those happen. So again, the department thanks you, I thank you. It is truly an honor to serve the, the community of East Palo Alto and, and move through these challenging, difficult waters. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Well, I just wanna say thank you for that report. I really admire the work that your department does every day. You guys do a lot. Thank you for being here tonight. I especially wanna learn more about your pilot program and the graffiti abatement. That sounds really interesting. But yeah, thanks for providing us with this information tonight. Does anyone else have any comments or questions for John?
Madam Mayor, if I could just chime in just a little bit. The presentation that you just saw was one that you might have imagined a staff of through three or four times the size of our staff. So I think while all of our departments work very hard, tonight you got to see what community development does and the work that it does. And I hope that the community was able to also see this, and it is available, it will be available online. This is a great accomplishment for a very small group of people that put this all together. A couple of things John did not mention, I've been beating him up and the other departments up in terms of what I've been talking about organizational infrastructure that you've heard me talk about a great deal about, cleaning up the files, helping us work smarter, not harder. All of that takes a lot of time and energy away, too. I asked him the other day about some files and he says, "Well, okay, do you want us to work on this project or do you want us to work on these files?" And I said, "Both." And that, he delivered both. But the point is, it's hard and it's constantly a struggle in terms of what choices to make and how to allocate the time. So, I wanna thank the entire team. I especially, well, a couple more things, didn't talk about franchise agreements, didn't talk about commissions that staff, staffs. But I, again, wanna thank the leadership team of the department, all those in the department. I wanna thank John for his leadership and his vision in helping the department move forward and again, the, the goal being to serve this community.
Great, thank you.
Through the chair. Just wanted to let you be aware that there's a request to speak on this item.
Okay, thank you.
So I just wanna thank the department. If you could all just stand up, I know that there are a lot of you and it's always good to see staff come, attend the meetings, if you can all stand. I'm just gonna say clap. And thank you for the work that you do for our community. Thank you.
All right, thank you. So if we don't have any questions, I guess we'll move on to our next presentation. Did you have a?
I did have a.
Actually, and then we have a speaker.
And then I think there's a speaker, too. But, yeah, well, I wanna also follow my colleagues in thanking the staff for all the work and definitely, I think this department, since it was created, and this is the first time that we've had a Community Development Director as such, and then consolidating many different things. So, this may be something that comes up maybe later on in the budget, but I, I am curious to find out any thoughts you have on now having experienced this huge department and the challenges, the advantages, maybe disadvantages, as far as any thinking that management has been doing in terms of any potential changes, or is that something that you guys will present during the budget process? Because I, I think there are some benefits to it, but I, now that I've seen it in action, I think that there are some areas that, you know, I, I think some things could, could change perhaps, I'm not sure. I mean, definitely, to me, the area of housing in general, I think it is a big area, it requires a lot of attention. You know, we're always gonna have that, it's not gonna go away, has never gone away. And, so that's one area in particular, although there's, there's other ones that this department ended up inheriting, inheriting that. And I'm not sure that, well, anyway, so I'm just throwing that out there in terms of any thoughts you've had, or if it's something that's coming down the line for any way to reformat things, if that's. Or even the employees, you know, I'd be curious, obviously that's not, isn't sad, but you know, even what, what do the employees think about the fact that this was reorganized and restructured and all of that? They're on the front line, so that, do they have any suggestions or ideas that could help, you know, this process? Because I, I say this, an evolving process and certainly, people always do a lot more than, you know, they just go beyond their call of duty, I know that, too, but, yeah.
If I could, Mayor, just, I, I will, I will say this, there, there are some things that the department was, was by default given. I would say we're on the peripheral area of what we maybe should or would be optimally doing. Senior Services, for example, is a pretty obvious one that is uncharacteristically in the Community Development Department and it was really just a landing spot. I look at the housing being absolutely connected to what we do and with that, but we can talk about that during the budget. I agree that, that, that overall, the thought is that that's a lot of work, but when we come back on February eighteenth with the talk about the funding, I think it, it becomes a much less of an issue because there just isn't the available funding. But, but that's, that's certainly something that can be discussed. But I, I think we would all agree that there are some peripheral things that, that we may do and deal with, and Senior Services is one, and the Shuttle, maybe even another area which are, which maybe have historically sort of been housed in the public works or not. It's a question of whether that was even the place for it to be or not, but certainly we'll talk about that. I know the, the City Manager has thoughts and ideas and will come forward with, with some recommendations when the budget comes forward.
The last comment I, I have is on the graffiti issue because I know that for a couple of years, the City Council actually identified that as one of the goals within the public safety priorities. And originally, we had the goal that we would adopt some new ordinances around the graffiti. And then, you know, after a year went by, I think our previous City Attorney and Chief Davis basically felt, you know, having, having another ordinance in and of itself was not really gonna solve the problem. That it was really an, an issue on the ground of what to do on the ground, so to speak. And so, I think we redirected that from a council goal in terms of passing ordinances to a city sort of program. So, that, again, I think it's, I think our mayor mentioned that, you know, the, the pilot. I think it would be important to structure whatever it is that is being thought of so that it's, it gets presented to, to the council and to the community as a program, because for this one, I really feel that we need to enlist the entire community and we need to find, so that pilot or that program needs to articulate some ways in which we could do that. I know that's, a lot of people willing to volunteer, people wanna do something, but they feel that maybe they're getting in the way or, I'm not sure, but I think that this is an area that I think it's doable, that we, we just need to expand it. I'm just thinking of volunteers especially, or just people knowing the kinds of things they can do, they can rely on our staff, but our staff does not necessarily have to do everything. And so, I'm, I'm looking forward to that one because I know we, we redirected that from an ordinance to more a program, even if it was limited, but to know, so, yeah. That's, that's a, that's a request, that's a request to have, it's like, you know, a few pages or something that says, "This is the anti-graffiti plan."
Sure.
Program, and then, and then we can debate it, discuss it, and then be of assistance to, to the staff. I think, at least, I see part of my role, working with the community, people who wanna help, and I, you know, if there's ways that they can help. I think graffiti is one of those that all of us need to help. Otherwise, you know, we're just gonna go around in circles all the time.
So through the mayor, so there, well, we, we looked at a very small piece of this to try to help homeowners because they had constantly been coming and said, "Can, if we can get the paint, if you can get us a can of paint, we'll paint the stuff over and deal with it." So we were trying to respond to a very small component piece of that. Now, what we have done through our, our Management Training Exchange Program in turn, have connected the Police Department and we're involved with this, with a master's program individual through San Jose State who is working on their master's thesis, and as part of their master's thesis is going to work with the Police Department and the city to develop that anti-graffiti program and look at the strategies on a broader perspective. That plan will come back to the council for deliberation and ultimately discussion about how we implement that through the Police Department primarily, but that will be also, again, a collaborative. And that's what I think we're really talking about in terms of the plan.
Okay, so this pilot is, like you say, okay, I understand it. So the pilot is really more.
Very, you know, a.
A focused effort in response, but this other plan that we had asked for, it's coming down.
It's coming down the line and it's gonna be a much broader perspective on, on stopping it from the, from the get-go, all the way to how do you abate it once it's there. Okay, all right, thank you.
All right, can we hear from our speaker, please?
Yes, we have two speakers. First speaker, Mr. Bob Gomez, followed by Patrick Brock.
Thank you.
Good evening. Bob Gomez, four to East Oak Street, East Palo Alto, California. Thank God. I was thinking about, what I was gonna say, but I'll go ahead and do it. Mr. John Doherty here has been doing, and his staff's been doing a real, real good job. I would suggest that maybe you council people could come, attend some of these meetings that they have, at Planning and Development Commission, not Commissions, and see what we do, I mean, we do, they do. But nevertheless, I strongly encourage you people to consider applying more funds for the planning commission and also the community. I know you have your priorities and you're probably gonna be doing the same thing, but I wish you would reconsider of bringing up some of these other issues that are not as important to you people, but it is to the community. Like, for instance, better sidewalks or better lights, it might not be in your agenda about getting them as a priority one compared to maybe a new library. But nevertheless, think about these smaller issues and see if you can allocate funds for some of these smaller issues. And once again, I, I'd like to congratulate John and his crew. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Happy New Year, council, staff. Like Ruben said, Jerome chases me when he sees me, 'cause I'm hiding from him, about the graffiti, about the dumping, you know. I wanna volunteer to be on some kind of working group, 'cause it's been going around in circles for years. And if it wasn't for J. Farr, you know, the five properties that are either own part or I'm associated with, you don't even wanna take nobody over to show them if you might got something that you wanted to see. It is, it's out of control. And that recology, you call them and they won't come for two weeks, but it's really, especially the graffiti, they got on top of Drew down there and drew a bunch of stuff up there where you come over the freeway. Maybe we, we let them have the mural project when, before we tore down the University Palms, they did that in other cities, let them come somewhere and draw, draw somewhere where everybody can see it or something. But I am telling you, it is a problem, the dumping, the graffiti, the water, we're gonna have to work out. But with this new year coming up, it really makes our city look bad. And like, we were on Bay Road the other night for the free last opening, and it was about a hundred people walking back and forth, forth on Bay Road, and, and you can see the downtown there now. Some people said, "This is what it gonna look like when everything get finished?" But if we can't stop the, the young people with the graffiti and the old people dumping, you know, we got a problem when we do fix the city up. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, I think we're ready for our next special presentation. Thank you. We have an update on the 2081 Bay Road Romic Site Contamination Cleanup and Remediation, Ronald Leach, United States Environmental Protection Agency.
Mayor, we, in consultation with City Manager, agreed that it was probably time to bring Ron back and give you an update on the status of, of the former Romic site and where we are. And so, I'm pleased to, to have Ron here again. He has been, I think, extremely responsive to your desires to hear more about it, so with that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for inviting me back. Good evening, Mayor, and members of the City Council. Is this, okay. As you know, I'm Ron Leach from the U.S. EPA in San Francisco. My role is the project manager overseeing the investigation and cleanup of the former Romic site. I'm here tonight just to update you on our progress. With me is Mark Johnson from the Regional Board. Mark's also been involved on, in the project and he's here tonight to help me answer any questions you might have after my presentation. I'd like to start out with a background overview to give you some perspective on where we've been, leading on to where we are today and where we wanna go in the future. So, background-wise, Romic was a hazardous waste management facility. This means they manage many types of chemical wastes. They stopped operating in 2007 and started the closure process. The state of California, the Department of Toxic Substances Control, oversaw the closure. As a result of the closure, all the surface units were removed. I have a before and after picture for you, of what it looked like before closure, which this is the central processing area with the distillation towers. And then, this is what it looks like now. It's all been gone, it's all gone. Even all the buildings were removed. So the only thing that remains on-site right now are concrete foundations. So as a result of Romic's past operations and those of its predecessor companies that date back to the 1950s, and that's when the first chemical plant started operating there, the soil and groundwater beneath parts of the site are heavily contaminated. The largest and most important group of contaminants are solvents, which is primarily what they handled at the site. In 2008, U.S. EPA selected a cleanup remedy for the site, and that was using enhanced biologic treatment. That involves using the natural microbes and bacteria that live in the soil. We did that by feeding them, basically. We did that by feeding them, basically. The extra food stimulated them into consuming the solvents, and they break them down and destroy them. So this type of treatment, which has been ongoing at Romic, even though they've been shut down, they're still doing the treatments, has been very effective. So moving on to where we are today, Romic has been in discussion with a prospective purchaser of the Romic property. Mr. Raymond Tate, who's president and CEO of American Gas and Technology, is interested in purchasing the site and redeveloping it. Mr. Tate is here in the audience, back there, right over there, and he's interested in doing the redevelopment. So Mr. Tate has been working together with Romic to put together a conceptual design plan for cleaning up the site in accordance with U.S. EPA's remedy decision. That plan was submitted to U.S. EPA, DTSC, and the Water Board. It's called a conceptual remedial design plan, and I just call it a cleanup plan for short, and it presents the concept of how they're planning to deal with the contamination. Detailed plans of it will be developed later. One key element of the plan is to expand the existing biologic treatment to full scale, you know, across most of the site. Another key element is to install a site cover over the site, and that's using the existing concrete that you saw on the picture as a base. So that concrete will stay there permanently, and on top of it would be three to eight feet of clean fill material, and then on the very top would be hardscape like asphalt or concrete. And the cover has two purposes. The first purpose is to raise the elevation of the site, so any new buildings constructed on it would not be subject to flooding, 'cause right now the elevation is close to sea level. So they wanna raise the elevation. Second purpose of the, the cover is to prevent direct contact with any contaminants that may remain in place, you know, after the cover's constructed. So where we are now is, oops, sorry, that the conceptual design has been submitted and reviewed by the agencies, and we've found that, U.S. EPA has found in conjunction with DTSC and the Water Board, that the cleanup plan is protective, or what it proposes is protective of human health and the environment. It's consistent with our remedy decision, and it's also compatible with redevelopment. By compatible, I mean that once the site cover is built, and once they construct the infrastructure for the biologic treatment, the development can happen while the treatment is ongoing. They can happen at the same time. This is because all the development happens at the top on the surface, and all the treatment happens at the bottom, below the concrete, with the microorganisms doing the work. So that's what I mean by compatible. The buildings can be constructed while the treatment is going on, and they can be operated at the same way. So in terms of next steps, is, U.S. EPA will approve the conceptual cleanup plan soon, within the next few weeks. And once that plan's approved, they need to do some additional testing on the site to collect more information to complete the more detailed design plans. And once they are completed, those detailed plans are submitted to us for review, and once we approve those, then the actual remediation system could be constructed. So in a nutshell, I know that was kind of a lot of information, but in a nutshell, that's it, and you know, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Council members, do we have questions?
Yes, thank you for your presentation. I would definitely be interested in the detail of the remediation plan. In addition, can you give me some more information on the remaining contaminants? Because you mentioned.
Oh, yeah.
There's, there's gonna be remaining contaminants. When will we be close to, will we ever get to 100%?
Right, right, that's correct. It, it won't be 100%. There are other contaminants there, like metals, like lead, and some other things. And the reason that the solvents are most important is because there's more of them there, and they're mobile. They can move with the groundwater, and they can also volatilize into the air. So that's why the treatment is directed at those, at those contaminants. The other contaminants are static, they would tend to stay there, and the cover will prevent direct contact with those. And that's why I said the, the plan is protective, because with the cover there, it's protecting, nobody will come in contact with those contaminants. The solvents would be treated and broken down, and that would be probably around maybe 95%. The goal is 95% of them to be removed, and the remaining ones would probably not be, you know, significant. So that's what I mean. There will be contaminants remaining under the cover, for sure. There's other more static ones, like PCBs, and the metals, and some other things as well. But as I said, they don't move, so thus they're not considered a big threat.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, through the chair, I did have a couple questions, and thank you for your update.
Sure.
So this concept of being compatible.
Mm-hmm.
Could you speak to that a little more? I, you know, frankly, I was under the impression, and does it not knowing, I mean, knowing enough, but not knowing as much as you know, and those of you who are experts in this field, but I was under the impression that once U.S. EPA sort of gave the, the approval that, you know, it was sufficiently non-contaminated, that then there could be discussions as to what to do on that property. Sounds to me that you mentioned there is a plan that was submitted by, obviously, the owners and then a potential developer.
They worked together to develop the plan.
Right, okay. So, 'cause in, Farley was kinda like, well, are you representing, are you representing, who are you representing now? But is this U.S. EPA?
Oh.
Okay, so, like I said, I was under the impression that first, at some point, we'd get like a clean bill of health, you know, saying, okay, this site is no longer contaminated, or at least you say it's not 100%, not 99%, 98%, particularly when it comes to water, because we know water's an issue in many ways, but, you know, to what degree has there been contamination of the, of the water? And is it, are there any guarantees that we can completely eliminate that or treat that, so that the water would no longer be contaminated? Or that'll just a matter of time, it'll take time, so in that sense, you know, the sooner some development could happen, as long as you're doing the treatment. But, so I'm just curious about this intersection that has just occurred. The other thing I would ask, and maybe we can do that through our staff, is I think, I think it would be important for the city council to have a copy of this plan that has been proposed to U.S. EPA.
Oh, sure, oh, definitely.
You know, to be more informed about it, because obviously, that, that area is very important for the city in terms of potential development. On the other hand, this whole nightmare of contamination is one that the community has also felt very strongly, and I think the community needs to be assured, we need to be assured by you that, you know, it's gotta clean, whatever it said, bill of health before we start talking about already, well, something could go on that site, but, you know, we're gonna keep treating it. So, yes, that's, if you could comment a little bit more on this concept of it being compatible and.
Being, oh, compatible?
Well, in other words, you say like, so there's a proposal to do something on the site while the treatment is going on, but it's, the cleaning proposal is.
Well, let me, let me answer that question.
So I'm just curious to understand more this concept of being compatible. Like I said, just because I was under the assumption that at some point, you know, U.S. EPA would say, okay, it's, now it's clean, or as clean as it's gonna be, so now go for it. Until that is done, it's kinda like, we, you know, I, I, I'm just being, I would say, skeptical only to the degree that the community, like I said, has suffered a lot as a result of this.
Oh, yeah.
And just to say that, well, you know, there's gonna be more details, and there's gonna be another plan, and in the meantime, we can start working on doing something there. So that's my concern.
By compatible, I meant that, I, I think, let me, let me just rephrase your question to see if I have it correctly. I, I think, were you saying that, that your vision was that the site would be totally or more or less cleaned up before redevelopment could happen? Was that kind of like the vision that you had?
Well, in other words, even tonight, so, okay, we have, 'cause we've had that before. I know that the community has always said, well, make sure we have reviews and reports. How is the cleaning up going?
I see.
Bottom line, that's it.
Right.
Now, like, you know, I'm, I'm supportive of development, too, but now these two things are being interconnected.
Integrated, yeah.
And so I, I just wanna clear the waters and be able to say to the community that, you know, the, the top priority is to clean this site.
Yes.
Okay? Even if potentially there was no development, in my opinion, is much more, the health of the community is much more important than any given development. They don't have to be contradictory, but that, I just threw me for a loop a little bit.
Right.
So that's all I'm saying, and I'm sure that, well, I don't wanna say I'm sure, but I think other people in the community might be also wondering, well, what's going on here? I thought we were talking about cleaning up the site, and once that was done, then, okay, what can we do on that site? But we're compatible, seem to me, can accommodate both things, you know, starting to happen. Is that what?
Well, what, what I was getting at with the compatibility is that, that two things could, could possibly happen at the same time, because the treatment is all happening underground. No waste is being brought to the surface at all. It's all being done in the subsurface. All the development, any development, Mr. Tate's proposal or anybody else's, could be done on the surface where they construct their buildings. So it's a totally separate area, if that's kinda what I was.
Yeah, but then, you know, I thought I heard you say that this proposal that is being reviewed by the agencies, it sounded like they're proposing an accelerated cleanup, or they're proposing to do more, or, that's the part that also I wasn't sure. Is this something new that Romic is doing that they weren't thinking of doing before, but now because there's an interest in buying their property, they're gonna? I, I thought I heard something like, this plan is now saying, we're gonna do it faster, we're gonna do more comprehensively, or, we're gonna cover more.
Well, they are actually.
Area, or?
They're actually covering some additional soil in the northern part of the site that wasn't covered before. It's considered a source area of the site. And the main focus, of course, is the source areas and the groundwater, to, to take out the solvents in there.
And, and the groundwater, like, so that's the part to the, could you just speak a little bit about the groundwater then?
Sure.
'Cause if there's not, if the 100% is.
Well, the groundwater at the site is saline, it's salty, and it's not, you know, considered, I guess by the Water Board, to be drinkable, even if it wasn't contaminated. That's the water from the surface down to about 80 feet, and that's not considered a drinking water supply aquifer.
Not, not drinking, but would it be considered a source of water for other purposes? Or not at all because of the salty?
Because of the salinity.
Salinity.
Yeah, and it, it's not really suitable for, even for agriculture, it's just too high. You know, Mark knows more about the, you know, the water definitions, but even if the water wasn't contaminated, it, the beneficial use is practically nil of the water. So the contamination has to be addressed, and, and that's what's required in our remedy decision, that it, it be treated, and it needed, it needs to meet drinking water standards according to our remedy decision. Even though the water is not drinking, I mean, even with the salinity, it, it can't be used for drinking water, we set high standards in our remedy decision, and they'd be, they would continue to treat it until the standards are met. So that's what is going to happen with this proposal, they will continue to treat it until they meet the standards. They believe, the consultants who put the report together, or the work plan together believe that they can come close to meeting the standards in less than four years. Maybe they can, and maybe they can't. I hope they can, that would be very good, if they could do it. But if they can't, they will continue to treat until they do. And the compatibility question is, while they're treating, the site can be used for something else at the same time. It's happened at other, in, in other sites, I mean, treatment can happen at the same time development's happening. You don't need to necessarily eliminate all the contamination to do something valuable with the property, or more beneficial with the property, so. Because if, as long as, our, our objective is to protect human health and the environment, that's what our mission is, and I, I have an obligation, I mean, I have an obligation to you and, and all the citizens of East Palo Alto to make sure that anything that's done at the site is, is done safely and in a protective way, and I, I take that real seriously, so.
No, I'm sure you do, you know, I, I, I'm not questioning you or anybody, it's just a matter of, I think, sorting out, even the water part, 'cause I think you say it's the same standards, but ultimately really cannot expect to use that water.
Right, right, right. No, no one would really use it.
No one would expect it, but yet you're using the standards as though, as though it could, because they're high standards.
Right, unless the official beneficial use was changed. I think, Mark, is the beneficial use considered drinking water still, or not drinking water?
The problem in the entire Bay margin, you have, you know.
Excuse me, can you use the microphone, so our viewers can hear you? Thank you.
I'm Mark Johnson from the Water Board. You know, the groundwater in the Bay margin, in, in this particular, in Ravenswood, the shallow groundwater is pretty high in salinity. And there's a legal definition for potential source of drinking water, there's a state definition, and there's a federal definition, and this sort of fails both of them. You know, our, the, the state definition looks at 3,000 parts per million of salinity, total dissolved solids. The federal definition's 10,000. And the shallow groundwater at Romic, and also south of Romic, I've worked on, I've worked industrial area for 20 something years, pretty much all the stuff right on the edge of the water is really high in salinity. And for example, the old Nisqie property on Polgus, where they're gonna, they're looking to put in the new health clinic, there's a deeper drinking water well, or agricultural well there. They ran that for a few years, and that actually dragged in salinity. So it's just not a good idea to, you know, to pump any water in that area, shallow or deep water, 'cause it's just gonna pull in the bay water. There, there were, the San Francisco PUC had municipal wells out, actually past the marsh, and they pumped those over the years, and you get a little bit of subsidence, which is not a good thing, and they finally abandoned those, and those also had saltwater problems.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you so much.
One thing I'd like to bring up, because my, my specialty is really redevelopment of contaminated property. Groundwater cleanups generally take a long time. One of the sites I was working on earlier today, they started the cleanup in 1984, and the, the quote from the consulting company was, don't worry, we'll have it cleaned up in no time, it'll hardly cost you nothing. That was 1984, we're still working on it. But they do take a long time, and cleanups and redevelopment can go on together. You know, I was thinking, what projects I'd worked on, the great mall of the Bay Area is the old Ford Assembly Plant, Milpitas. That site had, while the mall was operating it, after the mall was redeveloped, we still had groundwater cleanup going on, actually, beneath the wall, the mall itself, we were injecting air, we were extracting vapors, and that was for gasoline contamination. And putting the oxygen into the groundwater allowed the gasoline to break down, and eventually we did complete, complete it. In this case, we're looking at a groundwater cleanup, which is, you know, like Ron, I think, brought up, is that we have the concrete slab, so what we're really doing on cleanup-wise is everything below the slab, they're gonna put in a nice thick layer of soil, so that 'll allow for the development to go forward in that clean soil above the concrete. So all the, all the underground utilities and all that stuff, the guys, the construction workers will be working in clean soil. And the, and the new buildings will also have vapor barriers in them, so that no vapors could come up potentially through the slab from the solvents, 'cause they are volatile, and move into any of the buildings, 'cause vapor intrusion is sort of the, the word of the day in environmental cleanup and redevelopment.
Yeah, no, okay, well, I'm glad you mentioned that, because I do remember, you know, there were several times when there were these plumes, or, you know.
And there are plumes at Romic, yeah.
And, you know, I think that was, that's the part that, even though it was okay or whatever, but I think that's the part that creates a certain insecurity in our community to know. community to know that, well, maybe you're telling me it's okay, but, you know, that plume went by and smell or something, you know...
And it's below surface, and this will, I mean, I think that the system they're looking at in the design, the remedy was adopted in 2008, the remedy, the system they're incorporating, the engineered system to move the microbes or to get the microbes into the ground will accelerate the cleanup greatly. It's sort of the next generation forward. You know, we sort of advance every year, and it is looking a lot better.
Thank you. Okay, I think we're going to go to our speakers. Thank you so much for coming out.
Oh, you're welcome. Thank you.
So we have a speaker, Tamika Bennett.
Good evening, Council, and Happy New Year. My name is Tamika Bennett. I live at 2576 Franklin Way, East Palo Alto. Thank God. I'm here on behalf of Youth United for Community Action. A comment was made that ROMIC just closed down, but I think everyone here knows that it was an effort of Youth United for Community Action and community members who labored and toiled to shut ROMIC down. It was quite a battle. We also hosted a meeting with US EPA, DTSC, Mr. Tate, and some other members of the community last year. And we did hear the proposed project, but after that meeting, we just, we really weren't convinced about the gas and the technology. It all sounded too good to be true. And when we spoke with community members afterwards, we just really don't think it would be a good fit for East Palo Alto. And we know that this might be another battle, but we are definitely willing to wage it. We have been working really hard to make sure that East Palo Alto stays East Palo Alto. And we worked really hard on the RBD, on the RBD district, that's zoned for light industry. Nowhere in there does gas and technology fall. And so, we're really hoping that Council hears that, we're hoping that Council remembers all the hard work that this community put into shutting ROMIC down, and to let another ROMIC-like corporation come into East Palo Alto would really just be hurtful. And, I mean, just all the work that we've put into it, would we do? And so, yeah, just wanted to make sure that we voiced that tonight, and that everyone knew we are watching this process. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. All right, so I think we're done with this presentation. If we don't have any further comments, we'll go ahead and move on to oral reports. We don't have any closed session, out of closed session reports tonight. Do we have any staff reports?
Just real briefly, the Council's already knows, and potentially the community might know as well, that we have a new interim police chief. His name is Lee Violet. He says this regard, he would have loved to have been here today, but he had a standing conflict from some time ago, so could not be here. I asked the community and everyone to please welcome Lee. He has been in San Mateo County all his career. He's moved up the ranks primarily in San Mateo, became the chief in San Bruno, retired, then became the, has served interim capacity in several cities up and down the peninsula, most recently in Menlo Park, and got to know the organization of East Palo Alto while he was serving there. So really, just wanted to get his name out there. He is a real professional. I think we're very lucky to have him, and he'll be a really good asset to the community and to the organization. Ask the community members, please stop and say hello to him and welcome him to the community, and look forward to him working with us.
Thank you. I look forward to meeting him. I guess we can move on to city council reports.
Well, I did have a question, actually, of the staff, and it does relate to this report, and certainly look forward to meeting the new interim chief, Mr. Violet, but, so I, actually, I didn't have a chance to type it, but I do have a few questions that I want to leave with the staff, because people have been asking me, and I'm not sure how to answer them, since I don't have all the information. And part has to do with this, what I think was sort of a sudden departure of the interim chief, Rocha, and then the sudden appointment of a new interim chief. And so, I'll just read the questions that I have, and, you know, if the city manager cares to come in now or later, or I am asking that these be put in writing, because, again, I think it's important for the community to have transparent information and clear answers to questions. And if I can't answer them, and it's something that is more than the purview of management, then I think I, as a council member, need some help. So, one question I had is to find out, what was the process, the procedure, and the timeline used both to release Mr. Rocha and to hire Mr. Violet? And I'm curious whether those decisions were made just last week, or if not, before, or when were they made? I'm also curious to find out if, why the city council was not consulted to request possible extension or some other options from PERS, if they were considered by management? Because I know that, I've been here long enough in the city, know that there's sometimes ways in which you can request an extension, but it has to come, management has to bring that to the city council if they wish to. The other thing is that, you know, over some months, I have heard rumors that management is considering or discussing contracting out of police services with the sheriff. And I just want to have some information in regards to this situation. And so, I would ask also that, to get a copy of the contract that was extended to Mr. Violet. And I think the other, the other question I had here, but I think it's going to come up later, is, in step with this change, what, when are we getting at least an outline of what the process, after the council gave direction about the process for hiring the permanent chief, when are we getting some report on that? Because I think there's work that needs to be done in just simply setting that up. So I'm curious to that. But in any event, I just had these questions, and, like I said, I don't necessarily need an answer tonight, but I would like to get some answers. So I'll just pass this over at some point here.
Okay, thank you.
I'm happy to respond to those questions in writing.
Great. So, city council reports. I have a few announcements. This Friday, the city council has our strategic planning retreat here in this room. We'll be discussing core services, so I invite everyone to come out. What is the timeframe for that again?
Nine to three.
Nine to three o'clock this Friday. I also invite everyone to join us for the State of the City on Monday, February 3rd in the evening, and I believe that's at seven o'clock. And also, council members, if you can mark your calendars for Thursday, February 25th, it's an evening. I'd like to plan a follow-up meeting for our city council strategic planning retreat. So we'll probably start around 6:30 or 7:00, but if you can mark your calendars, that'll be a follow-up after our strategic planning retreat. And of course, community members are also invited to join us then, too. I think that's it for me. Do other council members have any reports tonight?
Yes. Forgive me, I have a headache tonight, struggling over here. But I wanted to congratulate Mado O'Kella. He was appointed to the San Mateo County Parks and Recreations by Supervisor Warren Slocum, and that is great for the community. Yesterday, I attended the Martin Luther King Jr. Celebration at the Community Church, which was a great program, and I just thank them for continuing to honor Dr. King's legacy in having programs for our community, because we can't forget our history. Also, wanted to congratulate Bob Hoover. Mr. Hoover was awarded the Jefferson Regional Award from CBS, and so that's another star, a feather in our cap for our community. For all the good work that he's doing, not only within our city, but regionally, CBS has recognized his achievements. Also wanted to thank and congratulate Beverly Beasley Johnson on her retirement from the San Mateo County, and it would be nice if we could honor her for all of the good work that she's done with the community. And in addition, Free at Last, for their 20th year anniversary, I was able to participate in that program on Friday night, and they're doing some great things. Lastly, just wanted the community to know that Mi Pueblo is hiring, so for those that are looking for jobs, Mi Pueblo is hiring. Thank you.
All right.
Just a couple of things. When I did, I saw in the newspaper last week that the fire chief, our fire chief, Harold Sheppelhman, is back, and so I just want to, I think, on our behalf, just welcome him back, since he had his accident, but he's been recovering, and so he's back at work. He's always been a great, I would say, had very, make sure the fire district is looking after our, our community, as they cover three communities, but in particular, I've always found him to be a very responsive person, so, and I wish him speedy recovery, too. I think that's the only one I'm going to ask.
Actually, I also attended the event last Friday at Free at Last, but I was more towards the beginning, around one o'clock. And I also was really impressed with a lot of the staff members there, providing tours and showcasing some of the programs and services that they provide, community members. So I also attended, and I just want to say that it was a great event. So we're going to go ahead and move on to community forum. Anyone wishing to address the council is requested to submit a completed sheet, a completed speaker sheet to our city clerk. When your name is called, step to the podium and address the council. Each speaker is limited to two minutes, please. First speaker, Mr. William Webster.
Madam Mayor, members of the city council, my name is William Webster, reside at 480 East O'Keefe. I was gratified to see Vice Mayor Gauthier, and also the recent appointee, Donna Rutherford, at the 11th Annual MLK Celebration at Community Church of East Palo Alto. I've been attending virtually every year. I had missed one of the 11 years, but I find it such a refreshing inspiration to attend these programs honoring the great moral giant of the 20th century in American history. I wish I could say that I felt we had the same kind of giant moral leadership that Reverend Martin Luther King Jr. exhibited. I don't see it any longer. Years ago, we had more observances of Dr. King's birthday here in the city of East Palo Alto, and it is, it is with regret that so far as I know, on the day of the observance of his birthday, the only observance is the annual observance at Community Church of East Palo Alto. But I'm glad that they're faithfully bearing the torch and reminding us of the great example that Dr. King presented to all of us, who are concerned about the well-being of not only this community, but of our society and the world in general. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Christopher Ellis.
Hi, and happy, hello, hi and Happy New Year. My name is Christopher Ellis. I live at 505 Runnymede Street, East Palo Alto. We just celebrated Martin Luther King Jr.'s birthday. We just buried Nelson Mandela, and I have, in honor of three very inspirational people, I'm proposing that Bay Road, the name of Bay Road be changed to Cesar Chavez Road, that Bell Street should be renamed Martin Luther King Jr. Street, and Runnymede Street should be renamed Nelson Mandela Street. Renaming these streets will be a lasting tribute to these great men, and make a short trip through, down University Avenue, a more culturally rich experience. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, Bob Gomez.
Bob Gomez, 402 East O'Keefe Street. I want to make everybody known that there's two organizations, especially this one here, that I am very, very proud to have friends there, and they have worked with me, and I have definitely worked with them. And I'm talking about Community Legal Service. This community service, East Palo Alto, is fantastic organization, more than one. I can't say enough about these people. They're all professionals. They're all professionals. They're kind, they're generous, and they're human. And when there is a problem, and sometimes people stop me on the street and ask for advice on legal, legal issues, I always think about them, and I always direct them towards the legal service, because they're going to tell them what to do, what not to do, or what's possible. And like I said, that group is fantastic, started from their boss all the way down to the secretaries. And one other thing I'd like to mention is that, and I'm sorry I can't pronounce the name very good, Falanha, he's director of City Engineers. This man goes out of his way to help the people, and he does what he can with the people he has. He can't do everything, because he needs work, he needs people, just like John Dooley. He needs, they need people to help him out and accomplish some of the things that they want to do. So I urge you people to start thinking about getting more help for them. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, Bernardo Huerta.
Bernardo Huerta, 2124 Cooley Avenue, here in the city of East Palo Alto. What I want to know is, how has the police chief been vetted in this city? What his background, I want to know what his background is. Our police chief, Davis, worked to get rid of bad cops that were in our police department for years. This Wolf Pack, they're gone. And that's the standard that we have as a city, as far as not having racists inside the police department, and people that are just provoking our citizens. Back in 2008 or 2007, when there was a march here in East Palo Alto, over to Palo Alto, about their practice to be pulling over anybody's car, and there was a march about that, because the police chiefs there were saying, "Go ahead and pull them over." I was sent by the group to summit, and also the mayor, to Woodsden, to go check out this meeting. It was a three-day meeting, going over and over racial bias material that cops get into. And I want this cop to at least be, this chief of police, to know about this material, that we look for this material, you know, does he, is he in line with the good old boys? And if he is, and how long has he been with those, those kind of guys? Because these kind of groups, you know, what I learned in these classes, is that there's like, in a police officer association or other organizations, start backing up the police department, and they become, they're very right-wing, and they go to oppress the folks and communities, and that's what they cheer these cops to do. And I want to make sure this cop is not anything to do with that, because our standard is better than that. Thank you.
Thank you. Those are your speakers. Okay. We have no public hearings this evening. We'll go ahead and move on to item 8A, which is sidewalk maintenance ordinance.
If I could interject here, I would like to table this. I should have done it at the beginning of the meeting, but if we could table item 8A, the sidewalk maintenance ordinance, until February 4th?
I would be okay with that. I would, I would be okay with that. I think it's important that we have our other two council members here.
Yes.
For this item.
So I, I was not going to ask you to move forward with this item this evening, because I know that council member, Rutherford, is very interested in this item and so forth. And the only thing I would ask the council, before you, not so much table it, but continue it, would be, is if you have any particular issues or concerns that are not addressed in what you've already had the opportunity to read, that if you could convey those to me, or to the city manager, in advance of the next meeting, so that we could attempt to deal with those issues, understanding that this is an item that has been back and forth before the council many times, even going back to 2005 with Michael Lawson, and it is something that is of concern to A-Bag Plan, that we do try to get something on the books here. So I'd, I'd like to know if you do have any issues or concerns with what's been presented.
All right. Thanks.
Through the chair, I, I did read through it, and it's primarily focusing on the legal issues, but I think it would be good to maybe have a little information on, and you're right, it originally came in 2005. A few years back, the council decided, you know, before we turn over the liability to the homeowners, which it, it really is supposed to be their, their responsibility under the law, that we did appropriate, we developed a program, so we said, "We'll take care of the really bad sidewalks before we consider." Now we're at that point, but I think it'd be good to have a little kind of report on that, on the tier, you know, what was done, et cetera, just to, to back up our contention. So I think people, you know, know that the council is continuing to do what it said it would do, and it did take care of a lot of those.
So are you interested in having that report this evening, or next?
No, 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 I'm just saying for next time.
Yeah, yes.
I think, you know, as you were requesting any thing, so, you know, so that, so I think that would create a context for, for that.
All right. Vice Mayor, any requests or?
No.
Okay. All right, so I guess we'll bring it back? If that's okay? All right. Thank you. We'll now move on to, or did we have any speakers on that item? I mean, we're going to move it, so.
I do have Bob Gomez for 8A.
We're going to bring it back next time.
Okay, thank you. All right, so now item 8B, tenant protection ordinances.
So Valerie Armento, special counsel. This matter has also been before the council on several occasions, most recently in October, when the council gave direction to actually come back with an ordinance after having reviewed about a five-page compilation of what other cities have done with regard to a variety of tenant protections. Again, because council members are not present this evening, and because late today, we received some communications from both the representatives of the tenants, and the representatives of a leading landlord here in the community, we're not asking the council to move forward with this at this time, but we do want to get any input the city council may have. I believe you have at your places the communication that was sent to me from the community legal services representative, which just indicates some thoughts or concerns that community legal services has. You also have, had passed out to you a letter that was received late this afternoon from the attorneys for Equity Residential. That's a five-page letter, the first two and a half pages of which are legal issues, the second two and a half pages approximately are policy matters. I would direct your attention to the policy portion of the letter. I think a number of the legal issues aren't quite accurately stated, but I have had an opportunity to speak with Ms. Calfee before the meeting, and she has expressed an interest in trying to sit down and talk through and work out some of these matters. I believe that the community legal services people would also be interested in perhaps making some, or having some conversations, whether these conversations include all three parties, or just myself with each of them individually, is yet to be determined, but I think that there are a variety of things that can be resolved off, or outside of the city council meeting. However, again, I would be interested in any comments, or questions, or concerns that the council members have with regard to the ordinances that are in this packet, so that we can be, again, better prepared the next time we come forward.
Right, council?
So, in the absence of any comments, let me, let me just say that there are three ordinances. Originally, when this came forward a year or two ago, there was the concept that there might be one ordinance. There being three ordinances proposed at this present time, because different issues seem to lend themselves to being addressed in a variety of ways. And the other comment that I think is important to make for everyone's understanding, not only the council, but members of the public, is that this ordinance would apply to all tenants, not just tenants who are subject to the rent stabilization ordinance. And there need to be some clarifications to make that clear in the ordinance, but there are tenants here in East Palo Alto that are not subject to the rent stabilization ordinance, and this tenant, this ordinance would apply to all of those tenants, not just a particular segment of tenants.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So through the chair, I did have a couple of questions or comments. And so actually, that was one that I had for clarification, so I'm glad you started with that one, just because I think there, it is covering, I mean, I think the city of East Palo Alto does have some current legislation that applies to, in different areas, and some of them are exclusively the rent-controlled units, but this one, I think it was our intent from the beginning, I think that it would be something that covers all tenants, because the housing issues that continue to be of concern are affecting all tenants, so, so that's, as you stated, that's, that's what these cover. And there may be some areas that need some clarification, I guess, for that. In fact, there was one area when, talking about the exemptions, nonprofit, so the ones that are exempt, where it says nonprofit housing, at the very beginning, and the purpose, and the first, the first ordinance, 140210, where it says, talks about the exemptions, and it says nonprofit housing. Does that refer to, you know, buildings that have, that are owned by nonprofit corporations and are, or is that more attached to, because it says hotels or nonprofit housing?
No, so, so the transient occupancies would be hotel-type of facilities. The nonprofit housing would be housing that's run by an entity such as the Mid Peninsula type housing.
You're saying all these would not apply to those?
That's correct. Although the council could decide that it should apply to an entity such as that.
Okay, well, okay, so that was one question I had, yes. Just to be clear, then, that's what that one means. And then, yeah, this is, just a comment, but on, on the second page of that same ordinance at the beginning, when it's talking about, you know, the findings, underage, where it talks about, you know, displacement, which I, I think that's what underlines, I think, the interest in these kinds of ordinances, the displacement, or at least the unfair displacement of, of tenant, the tenant community in East Palo Alto. And so, maybe just the wording, and I'm not wedded to any particular, but it says that the city council recognizes that displacement is a major concern in conjunction with the revitalization of the community, and therefore desires, so, I mean, it does, I know that that is one of the, you know, it implies that, okay, so we improve the community, we have development, the economy gets better, therefore, it's going to potentially displace people. Now, in my opinion, what really displaces people is what I would call very excessive speculation on the housing market, and I, I would be one to suggest that that language be included in there. I mean, I think there's plenty of evidence that that is what occurs, because you can have development, you can have improvement, you can have all those things, and not necessarily displace people. So if that was trying to get at some underlying factors, I, that would be one for me to consider including, to make it clear that we're not just talking, you know, in general, and it's not necessarily all landlords or businesses who displace people. The, let me see. Oh, under, under the, on page four, under the, I think it was under the, the distribution So I think this one refers in part to, maybe it was under the introductory paragraph under section 14 to 60, yeah, under distribution of literature, where the literature relates to issues of common interest or concern to the building's tendencies. Does not meant to exclude other types of literature, for example, if there's a campaign going on that, you know, it's not necessarily dealing with the building's tendency, is not necessarily, in other words, is not necessarily a landlord-tenant issue, but people are distributing literature on, on some other campaign. I wasn't sure if this was being restricted to that, or it refers in general to literature, people passing literatures, and, you know, flyers, and.
Well, I think the attempt was.
A state initiative has nothing to do with.
So I, I think political campaign literature.
Yeah.
Is protected in its own right, because it's political campaign literature.
Right.
And my recollection was that the real issues surrounding the distribution of literature, at least a few years ago, had to do with items that were specific to the tenants and tenant organization, and, and tenant landlord issues, as opposed to someone who's running for office, or some proposition on the statewide ballot.
Yeah. Okay, so, you know, I'm just going by my experience, and so I've had experience, including being arrested by a policeman who, the manager called him, and I don't know what he told him, but all I was doing was talking to people, and you might say campaigning, and so I was arrested for trespassing private property, and obviously, it was the manager who didn't like me, needless to say, but, you know, they arrested me, and they let, they let me go, once they figured out that, well, he's really not doing anything. However, there was a period of time, and I'm not saying that's going on now, but we brought to the council a canvassing ordinance, which is in the municipal code now, but I have to say, there have been times, and I'm sure there will be times, when, you know, I asked myself, am I in the United States of America in the 20th century, or am I in some medieval time warp, where a manager could go around and pass literature to all the tenants on some political issue, because they have that power, they could go and pass it out? And so hypothetically, let's say that somebody is on the other side of that issue, and they come in, and they do want to do canvassing, well, the manager can kick them out, can say this is private property, even if a tenant invited them, because now they're in some common area. I'm just saying, I, I still hear complaints sometimes of that nature, which are a little hard to understand and comprehend, that they could happen, but they do happen. So I'm concerned about that part, not, not saying that it's happening now, but that these kinds of laws are meant to protect, including constitutional rights, that can be abused because of the way that multiple housing is set up. I just have to be honest, that that's really what it is, is, it, you know, and maybe the, yeah, well, so the manager would say, "This is private property, so you can't come in here."
So we can certainly look at that.
So I, so that's one that I'm interested in looking at, because I think that it's, like I said, it's, 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 it's a disturbing kind of behavior that some people have exhibited, and they have exhibited here in this town at different times, and, you know, there's other people who could speak on this over the years. But anyway, that, that was another question I had. But anyway, for now, those are some questions I had, and since I'm sure we're going to continue this, too, right?
Okay. I think we can hear from the public.
Okay, first speaker is William Webster, followed by Doroteo Garcia.
Mayor Martinez, members of the city council, my name is William Webster, reside at 480 East O'Keefe. I, I read through the proposed new ordinances, and I was gratified to see there was some reference to remodeling. The issue of remodeling, I think, is very important as it relates to the retention of properties in the rent stabilization program, vis a vis the potential loss of units from the program due to new, new construction. I noticed, of course, that in the draft, one of the draft ordinances, there is discussion of retaining units in the rent stabilization program, despite new construction within a five-year period. I'm really concerned as to how that would hold up with regard to the Costa-Hawkins Rental Housing Act of 1995, whereas, on the other hand, the issue of remodeling has been tested by the rent stabilization program back in the mid-1990s as a means to retain units that otherwise appeared to be a new, new construction. I've discussed this with the city attorney, and I really think there's an opportunity here to strengthen the retention of units, especially as units age, through the device of remodeling as a supplement to the, the retention despite the strictures against new construction. Thank you.
Okay. Doroteo Garcia, followed by Patricia Wishart.
No, somebody can translate for me. Somebody puede traducir por mí? Si quiere, voy a tratar, pero déme la información en pedacitos, por favor. Buenas noches. Es para nosotros. Mi nombre es Doroteo Garcia, vivo en O'Keef. Soy un tenant, un inquilino.
Good evening. My name is Doroteo Garcia, I live on O'Keef, and I'm a tenant.
Es para nosotros los inquilinos importante tener estas protecciones.
It is important for us tenants to have these protections.
Así no tan fácilmente podemos ser desalojados por carzas injustas.
So that we may not lose our homes unjustly. With these ordinances, us as tenants feel much more secure.
De poder ser un reclamo sobre nuestras unidades donde vivimos.
That we can make complaints as to the units that we reside in.
De poder organizarnos.
And be able to organize ourselves.
Muchos inquilinos no sabemos si tenemos alguna protección o alguna ley que nos proteja.
Many of us as tenants are not aware of protections that pertain to us as tenants.
He vivido por más de diez años.
I have lived for more than 10 years.
Y he visto desalojos y abusos de los dueños de apartamentos.
I have seen abuse to the, puede decirlo otra vez?
Abusos y desalojos.
So, he has seen abuses, abuse and--
Displacement.
Displacement, thank you.
Y esta gente que ha sido desalojada nunca supo si tuvo algún derecho o alguna protección.
And those who have suffered displacement did not, or did not know, or were not aware of any help to them.
Somos cientos de inquilinos que le rentamos a EQR.
Oops. Puede repetir eso?
Somos cientos de inquilinos que le rentamos a EQR.
There are hundreds of tenants that rent from EQR.
Y muchas veces no hemos, nos hemos sentido vulnerables como inquilinos.
And many times they are vulnerable as tenants.
Por eso, si estas ordenanzas se aprueban--
So, if these ordinances are approved--
En nombre de todos los inquilinos del website--
In name of all tenants at Woodside.
Les diría, thank you.
They would be very thankful.
Thank you.
Next speaker, Patricia Wishart, followed by Larissa Bowman.
Thanks. Hi, good evening. My name is Patricia Wishart. I'm a resident on East O'Keefe as well. I haven't even been one year on my lease, and I've heard some of the stories of abuse that Doroteo was talking about. I've attended some tenant meetings, and the emotion and frustration that comes out in those meetings is a little shocking to me, just even some conditions that I've seen in my own building. It's hard to believe that it's 2014, and people are seeing things like this. But I very much hope that the ordinance for tenants' protection is passed, and that it's distributed to all tenants in their own language, so that they can understand it, and that they need this information, that the knowledge is power. There's a plan for Vista 2035, but it's hard for a lot of these folks to look that far ahead, when they're just trying to make it through the month with the conditions that they're in. And the fear of retaliation and harassment is palpable for some of these folks. And safe, affordable housing should be based on the rights that they have as tenants, not on, based on how much they have in their wallet. So, we very much would like to see this tenants' protection ordinance passed. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Larissa Bowman, followed by Daniel Saver.
My name is Larissa Bowman. I'm an attorney with Community Legal Services in East Palo Alto. I want to thank the council for taking up this important issue. I also want to thank Ms. Armento for her draft, which is solid, comprehensive, and encouraging. CLS, Community Legal Services, has the privilege of being part of a coalition that, the other members of the coalition are Youth United for Community Action, Peninsula Interfaith Action, and a group, a nascent group of residents on the west side who are getting organized. And the purpose of this coalition is really to, to ensure that tenant voices are heard in the city's update to its general plan. But interestingly, what's coming out of that is a lot of the stories that we're hearing Doroteo and Patty talk about tonight as well, which goes beyond the general plan, and it really goes to the experience that people are having as tenants in the city of East Palo Alto right now. And what we're hearing above all else is that affordable housing is the top priority. People want to be able to afford to live in this community. They care about this community, and they want to be able to continue to call it home. I, in my job, I'm seeing a tremendous uptick in the number of evictions, particularly from the west side, and not to call names, but particularly from Equity Residential's properties. And that's alarming. I mean, that's, that's not just fear, but that's real. There's, there is displacement happening, and I'm concerned, and I think the coalition is concerned, that that displacement is going to happen before the general plan is there to hopefully prevent some of that. And the tenant protection ordinance is a fantastic piece of legislation to fill that gap, and to, and not just that gap, but to then go beyond it, and to work in tandem with hopefully what the general plan will be, the inclusionary ordinance, which the council is also currently working on. All of those pieces can work together to make sure that tenants can, can continue to call this community home. Thank you.
Daniel Saver, followed by Tamika Bennett.
My name is Daniel Saver. I'm also an attorney at Community Legal Services in East Palo Alto, and to echo the words of my colleague, I would first like to thank the council for taking up this crucial issue at this crucial moment in the history of this city, and also Ms. Armento for her work on putting this together. As Larissa mentioned, I think that we see this draft as a really positive step forward, and a really solid foundation upon which we can work to try and improve the lot of tenants here in East, excuse me, in East Palo Alto. And we are excited to have the opportunity to work with Ms. Armento, as well as Equity Residential, who's already submitted some comments, and I'm sure that we'll be following up with staff afterwards, in order to try and communicate some of the ideas that we have about how we can make this a very robust and strong ordinance to protect the tenants in this city. And just to preview some of the thoughts that we've had from reviewing the draft, I just want to highlight three issues that I think are particularly important at this juncture. The first relates to demolition and displacement from demolition. We're hearing from residents a really serious concern about the possibility of large-scale displacement that might happen if there were to be demolition of units, particularly on the west side, which is a little bit denser. And so, I think that this ordinance touches upon the issue of demolition, and I think that we want to make sure that, that that's something that the council really considers very seriously, that possibility, because of its potential to impact very large numbers of people. The second issue is just relocation benefits. To the extent that people are displaced, their capacity to find a new place to live, and to get back up on their feet. And finally, the last piece that I would mention is tenant organizing, where there are several other ordinances and guidelines, such as DC and the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, that have some very robust protections that we might look to as models. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Tamika Bennett, followed by Mickey Lee.
I just wanted to second everything that everyone who's come before me has said. I'm also part of the In Vision Transform Build East Palo Alto Coalition, and we really work to strengthen tenants, educate community members, so that we can partake in planning processes that the city has put on through Ramey and consultants, who are doing a fabulous job, by the way. We really want to make sure that our residents are able to participate in those processes and in those discussions, and so we hold these workshops and training sessions, and our next one is most definitely going to be around this TPO, and this tenant protection ordinance, which we do thank the city and Ms. Armento for putting together. And we really just wanted to ask to, just for some time, so that we're, that we're able to, to lead tenants through what this huge, huge, and potentially life-changing ordinance can do for our community. We really want to make sure that they understand it, we want to make sure that they have their input, and we want to make sure that they have their say, because this is about the west side, this is about their livelihood, this is about their living situations, and I don't think sometimes we understand how big of a piece of this whole process that is. So, we really thank you for this ordinance, and we thank you for allowing us time to read through it, and to educate ourselves on it. Thank you.
Mickey Lee, followed by Corey Caffey.
Hi, my name is Mickey Lee, and I'm a landlord, and I represent some of the landlords here, and some of the landlords who are not present. I know we've heard a lot from the tenants recently, I mean, just at first, a lot from the tenants, but I think the, the commission should also hear from landlords. We believe that the, sorry, the tenant protection ordinance, the supplement to it, is not necessary. We believe that the current ordinance is already robust. Also, after reading the ordinance, we believe that it's very one-sided. I don't think it's fair, or we don't think it's fair. I mean, for example, it talks about if, if the, if the tenant is threatened, what if the landlord's threatened? It talks about what the tenant's remedy is, are, sorry, if, if the landlord breaches. Well, what if the tenant breaches? Why doesn't the ordinance address those issues as well? It has to be a fair ordinance. I just asked, or we just asked, that the commission hear both sides before passing such ordinance. We hear from the landlord and the tenants, and I know that the tenants, I mean, they, they're very vocal, and I would be too, you know, some of the things about, you know, it's inhabitable, et cetera, but also the landlords, I mean, when, when we hear about tenants abusing, or taking advantage of the ordinance, I mean, what remedies does the landlord have? So, we ask you to think about that, and look at both sides. Thank you.
Thank you.
Corey Caffey, followed by Bob Gomez.
My name is Corey Caffey, and I'm from the SSL Law Firm, and I represent Equity Residential. I distributed a letter earlier today, and I provided additional hard copies this evening, if you need a copy of it. It's clear that the, that tenant protection is a policy priority for the city right now, and given that that's the case, the city's policies need to be very carefully drafted and crafted to support that goal of tenant protection, but also to minimize the negative and unanticipated consequences that any ordinance will have. And so, this involves a vibrant dialogue among all of the stakeholders, who need time to review, and consider, and reflect on what's in this ordinance, and, and how that will interact with state law, and with local law, and then what, what the policies will actually bring about. So, my letter highlights some of the problems with the ordinances as they have been drafted so far, and as Ms. Armento said, I believe most of these issues can be ironed out with careful consideration. I did want to just highlight that, that the city needs to carefully consider what the environmental effects of this policy may end up being, because there are unusual circumstances on the west side in particular, where there are, there's very old housing stock, and there are strict geographical limitations, and these unusual circumstances mean that the maintenance and Ellisack provisions could deter rehabilitation and replacement, which could create blight, and the parking provisions may exacerbate traffic, or air quality, or greenhouse gas emissions, which could really be problems for the city. So, we need to all sit down at the table and iron out how this is actually going to work. And I wanted to make one factual correction to what was said earlier, and that is that EQR's evictions are constant and remain in the mid-teens each month. Thanks.
Thank you. And our last speaker, Bob Gomez.
Bob Gomez, 42 East O'Keefe Street, P. for East Palo Alto. Thank you. Thank God. Like you saw, I mean, like he's heard two outstanding lawyers from legal service. See, these people are really, really concerned about us, and I think they're more concerned about us than some of the other people in high positions. Now, in my apartment, there's several empty spots or units. Why? Because of the rent harassment, or they can't afford it, and so they have to leave the area here. They don't want to, because their work's over here, but nevertheless, they got to go somewhere where they can live, you know, they can afford some, a place to live for them and their families. I hope the people will pass this ordinance and benefit East Palo Alto community. One other thing is that I have talked to several people in my complex, and they say, why should I go up there and talk to, that something's wrong in my unit? They're going, going to say yes, 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 but they never show up. Call up over there, they call, call, and nobody answers the phone, and they're supposed to be there from, I guess, seven or nine to five or six, but nobody picks up the telephone. And so, they get discouraged. And one other important thing is, these landlords should go around to, to their apartments and check what's wrong with their apartments, so that these people don't have to go around asking for help. Thank you.
Thank you. Those are our speakers. Okay. Well, I think at this point, we've listened to community tenants and landlords, we've heard input tonight. I think bringing it back at our next meeting would be a good idea.
Probably not the next meeting.
I'm sorry. I was reading my notes from something else, not the next meeting, a little bit down the road. Are there any other comments that council members want to make?
I did have just a few other, as long as I read it, I want to just get rid of these thoughts, and then maybe, you know, they may be inconsequential, but, so, one is just a small, I think it was just a typo on page 15, at the very top. It says, if a third-party service is utilized by the city to assist with relocation issues, an additional fee per unit, is it, additional fee per unit shall be imposed, or, I think there's a word missing on, you know, page 15 at the top.
Yeah, the word unit is missing, per unit.
So, referring to the unit.
Right.
The, now, I, so, one area that I think will be in, the, I know that the attorneys, both our attorneys and attorneys and various, with various perspectives, will probably have, you know, identify some areas that may need more work, but, so, since we do have these other ordinances, and there are state laws and all of that, so some of that will be, I think, important to coordinate, I guess. Under section F, and that, on the same page, on 15, where it's talking about the demolition permits, let's see, oh, I see, yeah, so, the, at some point, then, the landlord provides proof of compliance of the relocation assistance to the community development department. Is it redundant to include there also, like, the rent board, or is it just, that becomes more of an internal administrative function, that, you know, if the community development gets that, then they're going to pass it on to the rent administration, or?
Well, there really isn't a fact, the rent board's really not a factor here. The focus here is--
Okay, so that's an internal matter, then, for, for our communication inside?
Well, the, the focus of this portion of the ordinance, or the draft-proposed ordinance, is to make sure that there is a complete package that gets processed through community development, so you don't have a piecemeal situation, where somebody comes in, tears down a building, and then later comes back with the proposal. We want to make sure that if a building is going to be torn down, we know what's going to be replacing it. So, this is all intended to deal with that.
All right. Okay. So, as far as within the city, in terms of communicating that information, that's more administrative. that's more administrative, I guess, yeah, okay. Then on the demolition amendments to the city's existing Ellis Act, on page 2, could you just describe a little bit what the... So this is under the provisions that deals with liabilities, I guess, for displacement and exemplary damages? What's the difference between punitive and exemplary?
Well, so, so basically, they're the same, but the more legalistic turn is, term is exemplary.
Okay, all right.
And that's what's contained in the state Ellis Act, so I was trying to make sure that they were more parallel.
Okay, no, okay, good. I just, I'm not an attorney, so I, the, the, let's see. So on page 5 of that same one that, could you explain a little more, you know, this replacement of demolished rental units that is equal, with an equal number of affordable housing units? And then they may apply for an exemption. Just, how would that work, Section B or subsection B?
So, the idea...
Hypothetically, or, you know, just sort of trying to understand what would happen in that case.
Okay, so, so I was attempting to tie this in with provisions of the state Ellis Act that call for reconstruction within a certain time period as basically obliterating the ability to totally get out from the rental market through the Ellis Act.
Right.
Okay? And so in those instances, the units would again be subject to the rent stabilization ordinance. But the concept here was that if affordable housing units were provided and the affordable housing units meet certain criteria, kind of similar to the inclusionary housing provisions, that then those units could potentially be exempt from the rent stabilization ordinance because they would be subject to affordability controls. That's really a policy decision of the council. So that is in here for the council's consideration.
And that would be all of them, or a certain number, or is that also...
That's all a policy issue.
No, I mean, the units, would that be all the units that are, or?
Well, if there was 10 units that were demolished and they were replaced with 10 units that were affordable, this would be potentially an option.
Right. So if it was five, then it would apply to those five, or whatever number?
Yeah, it's, the concept is a one-for-one.
Oh, it's a one-for-one? Yeah, okay. Okay, thank you. Okay, I think those were my main questions right now. Thank you.
All right, thank you. So we're going to go ahead and move on to our last item. Our last item is 8C, Long-Term Trash Load Reduction Plan.
Thank you, mayor, council members. This is an item that I alluded to in my presentation of one of those significant issues and efforts that the city has been undertaking over the last, really, two-plus years, and that over the next period from, till about 2022, will be required under mandates from both federal government and the state to address these issues. And these will be a significant cost impact that we're going to have to absorb as a community to deal with it.